Welcome to the Planning Board meeting. pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any meeting. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed acknowledged or permissible. And terms of the Planning Board's general rules, the Planning Board reserves the right to administer ultimatum to the Chair, summons witnesses, call for the production of papers, cross-examine any person giving testimony during the proceedings, declare recess -- it sounds like school. Limit debate in subject site or buildings during reasonable hours and adjourn the hearing for cause. The order of business will be announced by the Chair. All questions will be directed to the Chair. Any person wishing to speak, please raise your hand on recognition by the Chair. When recognized, please stand, state name and address, specific interests in the proceeding, or special credentials, if any, pertaining to the presentation. Please speak slowly and within the context of the hearing matter. Hearing is being stenographer and taped for the public record. Planning Board reserves the right to exclude any unnecessary, irrelevant, repetitive, or harassing presentations. Cross-examination between parties and interests or any other person will be permitted only after due recognition from the Chair. All documents, papers, and plans introduced in the hearing shall be clearly identified by name or some other designation in the person, so introducing them shall also be identified by name and address. A planning board exhibit letter will be assigned to each submittal unless the submittal has been specifically identified by the exhibit letter. When excerpts from case law are cited, the complete text of the findings shall be furnished to the Planning Board within 14 days. Okay, so much for the paperwork. As I read, the Chair has the right to change the -- I'm going to ask for permission to take two items out of order, and they're both business items. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Let me -- roll call.
Member Glenn, present.
Member Ryan, present. Member Barry, present. Member me, present. As I represented, I'm going to ask permission from the Board to take two of the business items out of order. The first is 95 East Squonum Street, which is a request. Within the approved permit, the allowance for minor changes subject to the approval of the Planning Director. It's in the language of almost all of ours, if not all of our decisions, and this is one of the situations. Mr. Fleming?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. For the record, my name is Evan Fleming. I'm here on behalf of the Gillan Family Trust, and Alan Gillan has joined me tonight. As the Board may well remember, I was here before the Board back in the summer where we made a presentation of a proposal for an eight-unit condominium building at 95 East Squonum Street on behalf of the Gillan family. After two hearings, the Board approved the request with subject to the compliance with the plans that had been submitted. After the Planning Board approved the plan, the Gillans retained and worked with Brian Donaghy, their architect, to complete the building permit version of the plans, and as they did so, they noticed some inconsistencies and some things that they wanted to clarify in the plans. And I just wanted to walk through those revisions that they made to the plans. We presented them to the Planning Director. We also talked with the Building Commissioner, Jay Duka, about these modifications. And although both the Planning Department and the Building Department felt as though these qualified as minor revisions to the plans, they requested that we come before the Board and also present these matters to you. I did bring the plans, and I can slide them forward a little bit so you can see some of the markings that I made on the plans. This is more for you than for the members of the public. I just highlighted some red marks on the plans, just to highlight a few changes on these pages, and I'll just walk you through them. First of all, the plan shows some open dormers in the roof that were cut out.
Mr. Fleming, tonight, you've got to have some roll call. Member Cali, you're present?
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Cali.
The plan showed, that were approved by the Board, some cutouts in the roof and decking that was initially proposed and provided. What was changed in the final design of the plans is that they noticed that there was no roofing over this outside seating area. So the Gillans preferred to have some level of roofing over these seating areas, and they added that roofing. It didn't change the makeup of that height or the height of that roof in any way. It just allowed for an outside seating area for that particular location. And they did so on all of the buildings that had those cutouts. They also added, on the building that is in the rear of the site, decking that wraps around the rear of the building. You can see the deck that's noted here, but also on the back building, it's also noted as it wraps around the building. It just allows -- it allowed, basically, the occupant of that building, who will be the Gillan's mother, to be able to -- because she can't climb to the higher levels to be able to utilize the outside seating area, the roof cutout, to have a deck that would allow her to look out and sit out on a deck and look out to the park in the rear of the site. And in addition to that, as I noted in the other markings here, there was decking that was extended over the garages on two of the buildings, both first and second page. Each of these decks actually went to a halfway point. They were extended across the rear of that side of that building. And in addition to that, there were roofs added above the garages so that when the parties pulled into the garage, they had some roof covering. And those were added on all of these buildings where it was noted. So those were the minor modifications that were made. They were really just the aesthetics and the architectural integrity of the building. What I wanted to point out really clearly, because it was a matter that was praised by the Planning Department, is that initially, on the front building, as it faces East Squonum Street, there was initially some proposal to add decking. That was then removed. So the facade of the front building will not change in any way. The only things that do change are dormers that are on the sides that are noted on the other pages of the building, where they are noted here, to allow the roof in that entire area. We don't feel as though this really makes any significant impact to the building. It doesn't expand the buildings in any way. It doesn't add any bedrooms or any living area. It really just changed some of the aesthetics to allow for outside use in an area that is a more urban setting to allow for some outside space. That's our presentation.
The Board will note, within their package, the concurrence of the Planning Director, I'm sure Mr. Director will want to say something to support.
Thank you, Chairman. We took a hard look at this site. The reason I brought it before you is there were a few people in the public that had come before us, and I didn't want your decision to, you know, question to the later day if there was something major, any major change. We absolutely believe this is a minor change. We're very comfortable with the changes. They're ergonomically sound, and I just -- they don't change the height, they don't change the actual impact. They're not -- and the decking itself is benign, so -- but after discussion with the Chair, I thought that we had a couple of business items tonight. It'd be wise to show it to you, just so you see that it is a minor change, and that's something I'd be a little bit more comfortable doing as we go forward. If there's a minor change, I'll show it to you, so you can see that you agree it's a minor change. So that was the reason for that, and we're very comfortable with the changes that we proposed.
Any questions from the Board? Thank you, Mrs. Fleming. Thank you, Mr. Cali. The next business item that we're taking out of order is for review and request of determination for a minor plan change, approval by the Planning Director for 1 to 15 Arlington Street, Planning Board case 2016-01. Mr. Hernandez. It's 1 to 15 Arlington Street. Took them out of order.
Did that change your speech, Mr. President?
I don't have much.
And three members of the Board, I mean, Mr. Juan Hernandez, and I represent Catharsis. As you may recall, Catharsis was before this Board approximately six, seven months ago. This Board approved a hotel they planned on building on Arlington Street. They went through all the proper process. They went through the zoning, they went through the planning, they had name of meetings. But at that time, they had an idea what they were going to do. Since that time, they propose some changes that we consider minor modifications, none of them structural. As you can see here, the one on the left that you see there is the one that they have proposed in the past that was approved. The one on the right is the one that they're asking this Board to consider now. There isn't any structural change. What has changed is, you see the top of the building, that is changing the windows. They're not adding any more rooms, no more parking. The only issue with the back of the Board is they've actually added more green space. Instead of cobblestones, instead of the stoppers for the cars, they're going to have green items. So it's an addition, it's a positive addition. As far as the structural, again, nothing's changed. You can see, the entrance was this, composed of this. The windows have changed, but they consider it a change to the better, a much more modern look, and they consider it a much more friendlier look. Now, I'm going to go to the elephant of it. Change your name. There was a change in name. When they came before, even before, they indicated it might be another brand. During the course of their meeting with other brands, they come up with a dual brand. And what the dual brand is, Holiday Inn Express and State Bridge, and they consider it one of the first hotels in the area that's going to be dual branded. I know there's some conflict with that. I know there's some concern with that. But I can assure this Board that it's not going to bring the character of the hotel down. It's not going to bring the clientele down. All it is is name brand change. That's all it is. The hotel will still be the same. The prices are still going to be the same. The attraction is still going to be the same, but again, there is a name brand. We're asking the Board to consider the cosmetic changes as a minor modification, but I'm here to answer any questions that you may have with regards to the changes, cosmetic changes, or the name brand change.
Any questions?
Mr. Hopkins, how are you? I can't remember how many times the application came before the Board, but I know that every time I said, "What flag is going to be flown?", and it was Hilton or Marriott, which for me, I would be able to think about the project through the prism of having stayed in those two chains. And so I'm not quite on board that this is a minor modification, because I have not stayed at a Holiday Inn, and I've never even heard of a State Bridge. So could you please explain a little bit more how we ended up at these chains, what price point they are compared to where we used to be?
The price point is not going to change. The price point is the same because they're attracting the same business. This is not a hotel that they plan to have families coming in. This is a hotel for business transactions, a hotel for which business people are going to come and stay. You're not going to see it busy on weekends, you're going to see it busy Monday through Friday. Why? Because that's when the business person travels. As far as the minor modification concern is, we're seeing a cosmetic change as a minor modification, and that's what we're coming for the Board for. The name change, they came to that result because at one point, there was a merger of companies not related to them that then kind of cut down their deal, their availability of having the Marriott and stuff. So they went to get the best flagship they could. Now, one of the concerns you have here is that one for the right for Holiday Inn Express. Okay? And you have the concerns, rightfully so, because of what's happened in other towns, what's happened in Dorchester, what's happened in Braintree. And I don't blame you for that. But those are, in essence, hourly hotels. The average stay in these hotels are going to be five days. Why? Because that's where the business travel, you stays. The price point, whether it was the Hyatt, the Marriott, or the Hilton, is not going to be any different than what they're going to show here. They're going to have the same price points, it's going to cost the same. And I will say, one of the -- who was very upset about this, and I'll be honest with you, not only the Councilor, but I know the Mayor's office was very upset with this. And it first got brought to my attention, right away, I said, "I'm meeting with the Mayor and the Catharsis to explain what happened." And I can tell this Board, and I've been in front of this Board many times, that the meeting started as exactly like Counselor Kane said, and I think the special agree, that everybody felt it was a bait and switch. After they met with the Mayor, and after they explained the process, how we got there, and after the Mayor saw what the insides are going to look like, no different than was proposed, after the Mayor saw how the outside's going to look like, I can tell this Board, the Mayor was much more comfortable with the people he met that are running it, that have a history of running good hotels. And the Mayor felt much more comfortable that it may not have been a bait and switch as much as, due to other circumstances, not involving Catharsis, but involving the economy out there, these two came to the forefront. Now, if you look at State Bridge, State Bridge is not local. And State Bridge is, you see them in Florida, you see them in western United States, and they're slowly coming into Massachusetts. But this will be one of the first dual-flag hotels that exist. I will tell you, they're more than happy to accommodate the Board, to let them see what they run. They've been five-star, the property they run to, they've been five-star everywhere they run. This is not, I don't mean to minimize or say anything negative over the town, this is not the Braintree Hotel, and this is not the Dorchester Hotel. This is an upscale hotel, and they tend to keep it that way. In their history and their reputation is known as running upscale hotels.
Question?
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman. So as far as the -- how is the management structure going to work? Is it like a local franchise owner, or is it who's going to be the manager or partner? Is it going to be Holiday Inn or State Bridge or?
It's actually going to be a third party that's going to run both, and that's Jim Goldenberg, I think, of ours. They will be, they are taking both flags in, and they're going to be running both. There will be one entrance, there will not be two. The actual entrance is no different than you've seen, I think there was a proposal before. It's actually a beautiful entrance. And again, it's not going to be run, they don't do that. One, and one is set for different types of business, but I will tell you that it's just one person, one company running it. In their reputation, again, they met with the Mayor, the Mayor went through the process of questions for what happened, why it happened, and who they were, and I will tell this Board, I think the Planning Director will also be, that they were satisfied as to who they were. The appearance is what you infer, or I'm sorry, imply, there might have been a bait and switch. I understand that the Council is very upset about it, but all I can tell you is that from the purpose they're here now, they're here for the minor modification, the cosmetic of the building, but they've also gone through and willing to go through anything they have to go through to show you, as they did to the Mayor, that this is an upscale hotel and not the one, Hotel Six, or not the one that's running Dorchester. It's not run by those same people.
When you approved the original plan, me, speaking for me personally, the location of the signage on the top was tied very much to the flag that was flying on the brand. I was able to get comfortable that something that visible from Newport or from coming up Hancock, I got comfortable with that based on the representations that were made to me about what the hotel chain was going to be. I personally am not as comfortable with these two new brands having such a prominent place on the facade. And so is there any wiggle room in how prominently displayed the names are versus where we are now? I, by way of example, perhaps move them down and have them over the entrance. How critical is it for them to be that prominently displayed?
They have not indicated that would be promptly reported on. Sorry, couldn't answer that question. I'm more than happy to take any questions you have and come back next month and answer all the questions you may have. Again, these are people that might demonstrate to this Board that the quality and the caliber of the hotel is not going down. The caliber and quality are going to maintain the same, but they have to make some changes.
I just comment, I agree with Member Barry about the signage. It looks clunky-looking to me. I don't know, you know, if there's something that can be changed, but I agree that it's a little bit different aesthetic than what we were expecting.
Any other members comments? The willingness in the part of the applicant to talk to the client and come back to us at our November meeting?
Absolutely.
I think that makes enough sense.
Thank you. If there's any other questions also, any other question you may have, I'll work with the Planning Director, and I'll get the answer for you. And if you want, you can actually have the people here that run it, I have no problem. I did know the extent of what this hearing was going to be, but I'm more than happy to have me again. They went through the process with the Mayor. I can tell you that I'm more than happy to go to the Council with the Board.
I just got an email that was sent to the Planning Department. "I'm unable to join the meeting tonight, so I'm writing in connection with, to this project, and the letter that I've submitted below in May. While I'm generally supportive of this project, especially given the fact that this property has remained vacant for years, I'm currently dismayed by some recent and unforeseen circumstances around the project. It was recently brought to my attention that this hotel, which was originally presented to the city and that I represented to my constituents as a Marriott or Hilton brand hotel, will now be operating under an Intercontinental Hotel Group brand, more specifically a Holiday Inn Express. This was a last-minute surprise following the approval of the project by the very Board, which has given me the impression of a bait and switch situation. For the two years I have been aware of this project, the brand of the hotel was purported to be that of a Marriott or a Hilton, but now something else. Working and Kevin Coughlin before me built considerable goodwill with Y3 and the surrounding neighborhood to make sure that this project went as smoothly as possible, and I do not view this act as one of the good neighbor. While I understand that this project is a fait accompli, I just hope that this is not a bad omen for the future of what was once a smooth and positive process until now. I kindly ask that you encourage the developers to stick to their promise of being a good neighbor and partner in Y3. I can only wish for the success of their project, for that in turn will benefit our great city. Thank you for your opportunity to come, in best regards, Ian Kane, Y3 Council." The letter that he also includes is an email that he sent back in May, which at the time, he had toured the site with Jim Kozadova, who was with, where Kane and Jim Goldenberg, and that he'd seen some of the other projects at Marriott, Marriott Brandon, Chelsea, et cetera. And because, having seen them, he was supportive of them.
Just so the Board knows, those hotels are still being run by the same people that are running these. So the Orchard Hotels you saw were actually run, are going to be run by the same people that are going to be running this. So it's the name that's changed, and I understand, and I spoke to Counselor Kane, and I understand his concern, because yes, the representatives, his constituents, and I respect that. But just so the Board knows, the same people that run that are going to be running this. So just a name change, not the quality, but I'll have the people here to explain that to you.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. See you November.
Yep.
Thank you. Yeah, back to our agenda. First item on agenda is the vote on the minutes of September 13, 2017, King of the Board, in Washington. Second, discussion, all in favor? Aye. Okay. The first, public hearing, 235-239 Farrington Street, Planning Board case 2017-09. In accordance with the provisions of Mass. Term Laws, Chapter 48, Section 11, and Title 17 of the Quincy Municipal Code, Quincy Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, October 18, 2017, on a revote, 7:30 p.m., in the First Floor Boards and Commissions Room, Quincy City Hall, 1305 Hancock, Quincy, Mass. On the application of EY Realty LLC, 10 Home Court, Malden, Mass. 02148, for a site plan review under Quincy Zoning Ordinance Title 17, Section 9.5.1, site plan review. The applicant proposes the demolition of both the existing two-family structure and two garages, and the construction of a new four-unit townhouse complex with garage and outside off-street parking for a total of 10 parking spaces. The applicant also proposes landscaping, drainage, and other site modifications. Property contains 10,000 plus or minus square feet of land and is located at 235-239 Farrington Street. Subject property is located within a residential B zoning district and is shown on the census plan map, 5121, Lot 15, Plot 16. Mr. Levin.
Good evening, gentlemen. I'm Attorney Henry Levin, and I'm representing the petitioner, EY Realty LLC. This particular project is exactly like the Board approved at 104-106 Intervale, four units, the same exact size. The only difference here is the size, actually, is the size of the lot. This lot is 1,000 square feet less. I believe the other Intervale was 11,000, this was 10,000 square feet. The other difference that we added, because we went before the Board of Appeals on Intervale, and you notice that the requirements are only for eight parking spaces, we have 10. The zoning Board requested, we add two additional spaces for guest parking, and we did that on Intervale, and we incorporated that into this one. So, because we have to go before the Board of Appeals for the same exact setbacks and so forth. The only difference is that the, again, is the side yard is smaller. The other one, I believe, was 20 feet, this is 13 feet. But it's for four three-bedroom townhouse units, parking in the garage under the building, and then an additional parking space right in front. I don't know if the Board has any questions.
Any questions for Attorney Levin? Okay. All right. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishes to speak in favor, please come forward. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Clear last time, anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Counselor, public. Mr. Director.
I'd like to make a point of clarity on this application. Before you, I believe you have a memo from the Inspeccional Services Department, Mr. Duka, where this is not negative testimony, I do want to make sure that we're clear that there are four different items that are a concern to Mr. Duka. The floor area ratio, he feels is excessive. The height has an issue as far as excessive. Side yard insufficient, and the lot size per unit is insufficient. Now, we intend to meet as a group, the city's managers on stormwater and a few other things going forward. One issue that does need to be brought before this Board is that this project will also need a special permit from the Planning Board for the excessive pavement in the front yard or a variance from the ZBA. So one of the site differences between this and Intervale is, in fact, the amount of paving in the front of this particular project. We are going to meet with Mr. Duka, with the site engineer, excuse me, with the city's engineer. engineer to try to tackle some of those. So I only ask that we keep the, keep the public hearing open and give us a chance to look at some of these issues and speak with the opponent. I don't see any large, you know, boards to, for me to walk over and point to. I know before you, you have some site information, I would just ask you to study that. And as we go forward, we'll be able to come up with a better sense of what's appropriate on this. But there is a concern that they are definitely going to exceed not just the planning board's paving issues, but also, also the ZBA's. As you know, the amount of paving in the front yard shall not exceed in Residence A and B districts 30% of the front yard setback. And in this particular case, that is in fact what we're looking at. So we just do want to continue to work on this project and make sure we bring before the board the best product that can be accomplished on this site. So I just wanted to bring that, one particular memo that is in your package from the director of ISD.
Thank you, Mr. Director. Attorney Levin.
Yes. This was the exact same situation, and we went before the Board of Appeals on the paving because there's, there's four units, and because of the, each unit has its own driveway, and that, that exceeded the, the pavement requirements or limits. And we went before the Board of Appeals with the same question, and they approved it. I just want to make that clear.
Okay. Third, last time, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? There are forms on the, on the window ledge. At the request of the planning director, I ask that the board continue this to November 8th meeting.
Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry.
A quick comment, I would just urge the applicant to provide the board with, and the planning department, a more sophisticated rendering of what the property will look like from the street, you know, as opposed to just the plants.
I believe that's in the, in the set of plans showing the front of the building. This one here, this one here.
Oh, okay. I just, I think it's helpful sometimes if we see how it fits in the view of it.
Oh, I think so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there a second, to the, to the motion, continue?
So, second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Levin. The next item is a public hearing for 479 Washington Street, Planning Board Case 2017-10. In accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 11, and Title 17 of the Quincy Municipal Code, Quincy Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, October 18, on a revote, 7:38, in first boardroom, commission room, Quincy City Hall 1305, Hancock Street, Quincy Institutions. On the application of Washington Street Acquisitions LLC, 27 Elliot Street, Jamaica Plain, Mass. 02130, for the site plan review under Quincy Zoning Ordinance Title 17, Section 9.5.1, site plan review, and special permit, Section 5.2.6, floating docks, Section 5.3. Point 13 signs. The applicant proposes to re-tenant the vacant 479 Washington Street building as a new multi-tenant retail structure for the leasing of 4,900 square feet portion of the building to Convenient MD. Project will include renovations to improve the aesthetics of the building's facade, reconfiguration of the site's parking lot to improve 60 spaces and a reduction in existing curb cuts. The applicant also proposes landscaping, drainage, and other site modifications. Property contains 45,644 plus or minus square feet and is located at 479 Washington Street. Subject property is located within a business B zoning district and is shown on the assess plan 2057, Lot 15-B. Attorney Hunter.
Mr. Chairman, three members of the board, Mr. Ward, and as I represent the applicant before you today. With me today is Pat Cleary, Mike Devonport from Point Cross, the applicants, also Kevin Nice from S&amp;D Consulting Group, Ben Clance from Communiton MD, and David Sands from Community MD. And also Jesse Johnson from Baller Engineering. Just so the board knows, the board may be familiar with this site, this is the old Tom and Ryan site there. As you can see, that, that building's been empty for, for a while, and it's also rundown. They, they, they assumed the property, they've actually purchased the property, and their goal now is to transform what is there to what they propose here. As the board can see, it's an actual upgrade from where we are. We actually, the process of doing this, we are neighborhood meeting, met with Council of Crow, who was very involved in this process and making sure that these applicants went, did exactly what the neighborhood needed. This, this doesn't come, this is not an easy project. They've had to actually, they're going to do a lot of work to the building. Now, the structure of the building, the actual footprint's not going to change, but what is going to change is the view of the building. As you can see, when the Communiton MD, they, where people here, that whole talk is going to change. This is what they consider the use of this property right now. Right now, they're looking at a bank tenant, Communiton MD Verizon, Old Store Verizon. It's going to be a neighborhood-friendly location. It's not going to be what they have another area, which is commuters back and forth, a variety store. They're not looking to that. They're looking to be convenient, have something conducive to neighborhood. Also, I will say, the process of going forward on this project, what they did is they met with the mayor's office, they met with planning, they met with the neighborhood. I would say, on behalf of Communiton MD, this is, they have actually five, maybe more, five in New Hampshire that come down to Massachusetts. This is a very, it's a company that works very well with the neighborhood, and the process of doing it, one of the things they offer is a lot of help to the neighbors. They do, I'm sorry, there's, there's going to be free shots for, for students, there's going to be free physicals for students. This overall is going to be such a huge addition to the town, to the city. You're going to see them work very, they're very invested. Right now, as we speak, they've already worked with the neighborhoods, right? I will tell you, the applicant is working very closely to the, to the neighborhood, the floor of a clubhouse, where actually some of the normal structural changes. And they're volunteering to go in there and help them do the kitchen. This is a company that now also, if you recall me before this company for iPod, before this board for iPoding, if you recall that a while ago, they're a responsible developer. They've been investing in the community, they don't build and go away. We're here to answer any question the board may have, but just as you can see, the parking is not going to change, parking's going to be better. The, actually, we have, you can see, if you go by there right now, that does not exist. The green space doesn't exist. It's a rundown building, a rundown lot. It's not, not being disrespectful to the owner, but it is what it is. This is a huge change to what they, what you see there, it's a very beneficial change. So I have all, everybody here to answer any question this board may have. We always look to go up, and I consider this a huge step up to what was there, and what has been there, and what is there. And we're here to answer any question the board may have.
Any questions, Wood?
Drive entrance off Washington Street, is that necessary? Maybe that's another question for the planning director, but returning on and off of Washington Street, you know, concerning, especially if the, the driveways entering off Southern Avenue, and I don't want to deal with the back road here, it would seem redundant to be to have that door.
We've talked about the entrance here.
On Washington Street.
That is going to be an entrance and won't be an exit.
Yeah.
And they did that way for the flow of traffic. They've actually, actually eliminated one of the entrances too on Southern Avenue. So what you're going to have, they actually lessen the number of entrances and exits out there. And they did it for the flow of the traffic. They don't want anybody coming out this direction. So they did it, they opened it, they actually, as you can see, it's not something you concern, it's not a hard, it's a, it's kind of a hard right, so they're going to have to slow it down and go in. We don't want people coming out of there, and the flow will go, you know, out to Southern Avenue, that would be concerning. But as you can see here, if you look at that place right now, we have it all, there's a lot of landscaping down there, it's actually an improvement, but the traffic has to be able to certainly make better. We feel just these two entrances wouldn't be sufficient, because the major traffic is right here, an entrance in there would be the post by first way around. There is a traffic engineer here.
Maybe you can explain to me a bit, sure. Evening, commute coming out of this, tomorrow, Southern Avenue, take the left in Washington. Like you said, it's going to be a hard turn to go back in the lane, and then coming down on Washington Street North, crossing Washington Street to take the left, when you can cross prior to the building or after the building, avoid, you can get in and out of the box lot, it seemed to make more sense to me than that, having that extra entrance.
So for the record, Jeffrey, your associates with the traffic engineering project, we did look at all the access points interested into the project itself, and one of the key things we were trying to do, recognize all of the things that you pointed out in terms of the traffic circulation that's there. That signalizing intersection, as you're probably well aware, it's a, carries a high volume of traffic, it also has, probably more important, lots has a high crash rate. So one of the things that we were trying to do, with respect to the intersection and the access points of the property, is provide enough dispersal in traffic by way of multiple access points, and you saw that. That access primarily is going to, it's basically a right turn entrance only. So what we were trying to do is have traffic coming through the intersection rather than have the right turn to make a quick left in from Southern Avenue. What ends up happening with the way the signal phasing works is we end up with a queue of traffic that actually blocks that driveway. So the concern was that if we forced the traffic to make a right-hand turn in the middle left to come in that way, it actually wouldn't be able to get in because of the queue that blocks the driveway. So the thought was, having that entrance if you're heading eastbound, I guess, on Washington Street, is if we design the driveway properly to make the right turn to actually come in, not have them slow down too much, but have them turn in that driveway, then the signal phase would operate much safer and eliminates some conflicting, eliminate some turning traffic at the intersection, because we were concerned with that. So I think from our perspective and looking at the access points, we thought it could properly design, function in a manner that would actually get some turning traffic out of the intersection, have it turn into the site in a slow manner, but not enough to actually cause rear-end crashes, because we were cognizant of that. So I think we did recognize some of the same concerns you had, and we looked at making sure we had a proper design so that we didn't create a safety issue.
Any other questions from that?
It doesn't seem like the, that you take that right-hand turn into that entrance, but isn't Beacon Street right there about, about 30, 40 feet or something?
It is.
It looks like you got two quick right turns.
Right. One of the things that we looked at is, when we looked at the Beacon Street access, is primarily the way it would function is traffic that's heading from the wing of the side let's say coming in, we expect the left turns will be made there and then come in from the Beacon Street. We really wouldn't have a lot of right turn traffic coming in that way. I recognize what you're saying. From the standpoint of even looking at the architecture, as people are driving, their first instinct is going to be, they're going to want to try to find an access that's close to where they're seeing kind of signature entrances, so it made more sense to do that.
Right.
Because by the time they've gotten by the building and get to the.
Take another right.
Exactly.
Okay. Any other questions? Number Barry.
Thank you. Does anybody have at their fingertips how long this site has been a car dealership? Not a Tom and Ryan, but how long it's been, you know, present.
Thirty, 40 years.
Perfect. So, that's kind of what I'm, I'm thinking to, and, and how many cars go through this intersection every day? I think you guys have that, roughly, how many?
So just, if we're looking at it a daily basis, you've got about 20,000 cars on Washington Street, and you've got about 10,000 on this leg of Southern Avenue, all meeting at this, at the same point. One of the things that we were able to do, you know, getting to the car dealership comparison, we were actually able to do some traffic counts prior to car dealership actually closing. And so we were able to look at the relationship between the traffic generated by this site and what the car dealership generated. And it's almost comparable, it's within about 20 vehicle trips, being that this site generated about 20 more additional vehicle trips. One of the stark differences is probably difficult to see here, if you look at all of the driveways into this site, it had about nine access points from the way that it was operated. So you've got three or four driveways coming out of Southern Avenue, Washington Street had one, and then they had, by way of the way they accessed Bessie Street, as you can see here, they had about three curb cuts coming out there. So, again, looking at safety, as we compare the access plan here, so traffic volume's not a large increase, but looking at the access, we go from about nine curb cuts down to three. So it is a significant benefit, especially along Southern Avenue.
And, so, the point I was actually making though, is, and, and thank you very much, because that's helpful, but the point I would make, so we have an intersection with 30,000 car trips a day that haven't been revamped in 30 years, and I'd argue that it's one of the most important intersections in the city of Quincy, and it's a gateway. And so, Mr. Harnig, I, I certainly appreciate the comment you made about what an improvement this project is to this site, but at the same time, I don't want to get lost on just the fact that we're improving, it's that we're getting the very best product that we can get for such an important site. So I was hoping you could walk me through how you landed on the concepts that I'm seeing. And, I'm going to start my question very basic, because I'm thinking that, that this is not the final product, that you're not proposing to us, that what here is what you would propose to build. But if you are, please do let me know. But I would like to begin to talk about how you have conceptualized this site with, with one in mind.
Sure. For the record, Patrick Cleary, I'm with the development group, we're called FX Harborlight. So, we started working on this project over a year and a half ago, when we first started talking with Mr. O'Brien. We went through a very long due diligence period, and we ended up purchasing the site back in, I believe it was June of last year. Right after we purchased the site, we immediately met with the planning staff, Mr. Fatsies, and laid out how we envisioned the site being developed. We thought from the beginning that the way the building actually oriented to the intersection in terms of the visibility, and if I might approach the board. If you notice, these areas here, it creates very good visibility and orientation for different segments of the building towards the intersection, for creating great visibility for each tenant, and creating the ability to have almost one building that acts as a few different storefronts, and end caps, which are very important for retail tenants. The feedback that we received from Mr. Fatsies initially, and then in subsequent meetings with Mayor Koch, and also Mr. Crowe, really drove, to a great extent, the marketing of the site and the tenants that we really geared our efforts towards. We did not feel that this was an appropriate site, even with the tremendous amount of traffic, we didn't think this was an appropriate site for convenience-oriented retailers who would bring multiple trips per day, both during morning hours and in evening hours. This is more of a destination location, our anchor, you know, our hope is that their customer is coming to them maybe once or twice a year, rather than once or twice a day. The traffic that a Communiton MD really drives to the site is necessity-based, and people who in, you know, to a certain extent are in some sort of distress, which is one of the reasons why a curb cut in that location for us is so important, so that we don't create confusion for someone who may have, you know, cut their hand, or may have a sick child, or someone that needs attention, to really be searching for a way into the site, and then end up traveling in circles around the neighborhood. There was a Verizon store that had been located just up the road from this location and had shut down. They know their sales in the market, they know that there was a need in the market, and they were looking actively to replace that store, and they jumped at the opportunity to come to us. Again, it's not a daily trip generator. We have always envisioned the front of the site, which you're probably very familiar with, on the corner with all the glass. We've always envisioned that as a very strong bank location, but because it is not your prototypical retail branch with a drive-through, we've talked to a, a number of banks who are looking at it at the moment as a loan origination office and treating it more as a. looking at it at the moment as a loan origination office, and treating it more as a financial office rather than a retail, you know, branch. And again, that would not be for your, you know, high-traffic user. And so we, at this point, we've, you know, we've been into it now for, like I said, over a year and a half with the envisioning and trying to design the project, and we are ecstatic that the thoughts and the plans and the vision that we had back last June, two Junes ago, has really come to fruition, and that we're at the point now, in front of you, saying, you know, we've, we feel like we've been able to attract the types of tenants that we thought were most appropriate for the site. But we do fully intend on building this product. One of the chief comments that we got when we visited the mayor's office, we had another design that was likened to a Howard Johnson's, with the roof that was a part of that particular design. We went back to the drawing board, redesigned the entire building, added a flat roof, had, you know, toned some of the bolder colors down, which were a much bigger aspect of the project, a number probably last year, we've toned that down considerably, so. That's kind of where we stand at this point. I don't know if I answered your question, but...
It was very helpful, and I think I am on board with your overall vision for the property. I think my name standing up, I defer to my members of the board, whether they feel the same way, is I want this finished product to be phenomenal, because we're going to have it for the next thirty years. And so I don't want to just settle on average, not on a site like this. And I'm not saying necessarily that the concept that I'm looking at is average, but I, but I also, when I look at it, I don't say, wow. The landscaping plan for outside doesn't pop out in me as the best it can possibly be. I'd like to see trees. I definitely want to talk about the convenient MD sign. Showed this to my wife and my ten and nine-year-old daughter, and they were not happy with this sign, nor am I. I can't imagine looking at this for decades, and so I want to talk about that and see if we can change that. I don't know if the red is part of the concept, I don't think red awnings and a red roof work at this site. So it's those sort of elements that I want to wrestle with. I think I agree with the foundation that you're building off of, I think I agree with the tenants, or the type of tenants that you've landed on, they make sense. I think everything you're saying is a benefit to the area, but I want to be collaborative on where we end up with the final project, because I do not want to end with something that everybody is not happy with for a long time coming. So I think that, that's my takeaway for you and your team, is I'd like to see something different, something more inspired than what I'm seeing on these plans, as that's my personal preference, but I'd defer to the board if they feel differently, because I'm just one member.
Would it be helpful for our civil engineer to present the landscaping plan and what we plan on doing, you know, versus what is out there today, and how we're looking to upgrade, or?
I think that would be great. Yeah, please. Thank you.
Hi, Jesse Johnson, Roller Engineering. I heard your concerns, heard your comments. I think one thing that's worth pointing out, it's kind of probably hard to see from that distance, is we show a lot of green space on the outside, where if you look to the left, there's, there's none. It's essentially pavement from the building all the way to the edge of the road or the heart of the town, and on all four streets all the way around. So at least we did increase open space by almost twenty percent, that's within our property limits, but you will notice, we're going to need permission from the city to actually create green space within the right-ofways. So it's not even a fair representation of how much open space we've created, because I can't technically calculate that within my calculations of open space. And that also a little bit limits us to what we can do for plantings. We are adding five trees, as you can see, along Bessie Street, and that's to help with some of the screening and buffering with that residential neighborhood on that side. We're obviously limited by the building along Beacon Street, because the building is essentially functioning as a property line, that's why I can't do anything between the building and the sidewalk on that side. I did, though, however, substantially beef up the plantings around the trash enclosure that's on, on that side of the building, in the lot, and then also on that side of the building, might be hard to see, but all through this area is plantings as well as enclosed trash enclosure, so it's almost a belt-suspenner approach to the screening for that. We've also got a lot of density of plantings into here with the transformers proposed, and then all along the building on that side. We also spent a lot of time on that front entrance to try to increase the plantings and create an area where somebody walking in off the street, it's a lot more inviting. You have it framing the entrance to a plumbing institution, but also the convenient MD. As I mentioned, we've got a property line issue right here, where it comes through this area and around here. So the corner is really the only space maybe where we could beef up some of those plantings. The only thing we have to be obviously sensitive to is we don't want to hide our building, that's living in view corridors. So I can go back and ask the landscape architects what they might suggest that would maybe beautify that corner a little bit more, but not certainly hide the building that they're investing so much to make look good, so there's always that balancing act to strike with something like that.
I think there's some symmetry to be had with the Cristofaro Park that is across the Washington Street from, from the building, and, you know...
When you say symmetry, just within the planting style that's done over there, or...
Whether within the planting style, or just something that helps to make it seem like more of that intersection is encompassed by green space, something that we haven't had the ability to do for decades. I'd like to see what we can do with this project. And I appreciate what you were saying about not hiding the building, just when I was looking at this, which is all I was able to base my comments off of tonight, it just looked like grass and some flowers, and I just thought there could be more.
Sure, it's kind of hard to see. If you look at our schedule, we do have, as I mentioned, the five trees, there's also a hundred and twenty-eight shrubs, we also have over fifty grasses, and then a mixture of corneals and annuals mixed into, so substantial landscaping plan. Again, to fit it within the limits of our property line, if we're allowed to go outside of that and do a little bit in the right-ofway, we could certainly do that, but then you just have to be sensitive to snow removal and salt and things like that. But we can certainly sharpen our pencil and try to do a little bit more on that corner, if that's what you're looking for.
We appreciate it. Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions, comments in the board?
I have a question. Can someone explain to me what the level of service is at that intersection? Because having traveled it on somewhat a regular basis, even with the assistance of QPD, it's a nightmare.
So one of the things to feel, so the level of service actually is, overall intersection is a D on a Saturday, so during the weekdays, it's at its design capacity, but I think one of the key things is it's not even, my caution in looking at the level of service is the queuing. The queuing on some of those approaches in terms of the backups during the peak hour is quite substantial. So even though we might be showing some of the movements are operating acceptably at a D or better, there's still a very long queue that happens on those roadways. So, so we're showing that it's basically operating at its design capacity, some of the movements are actually operating over capacity, so they'd be in failing condition. But again, it's really the queuing as well, and the other thing is, I mentioned, it's a high-crash location, so I think we're combining those two things. The project does include mitigation there, and I know there was, we were talking to the landscaping and everything in there, but the other part of what the project is doing is bringing some improvements there in terms of re-timing of the traffics, you know, there is some opportunity to improve the way it operates. There's also some opportunity to make some safety improvements, and we've committed to doing that as a part of the project.
Yeah, because that backs up. At PM, I'll always back to Cove Way, if not back even further, okay? AM, off to you.
All right.
Good. I just have one other question, that is, you may not know the answer to this, but the lot across the street, which used to be the old body shop, you don't, it's not under your ownership, is it?
It's not, no.
Okay.
Just with respect to various concerns, would you consider right there on there, one with one bush, with mulch underneath, that would be better? Well, we don't want to, we don't want to destroy the line of sight, or to the building also, the traffic coming down. So we were thinking maybe the possibility of just putting, you know, bushes this high all the way down, and all the way around the corner, with mulch underneath?
Something like that, I think. You know, a combination of the multiple species of flowers and grass and some hedging, a line of demarcation that is very natural and flows into the project, that's just what I have in my head. Again, I'm not a landscape architect, I know what I like when I see it, but I don't know how to make it up out of my head, but something like that, yes.
Certainly have about, like the trees here, you can see the trees here, and certainly have about the trees here, was the actual line of sight, also cars, because those blocking the building.
Yep.
But this right now is completely naked, as you can see from up there, so they might have cushioned the neighborhood, put bushes and trees. In fact, this was after, so I've discussed with the neighbors themselves, this rise from trees, so they don't have to see, see the building, also the back of the building, we talked with the neighbor too, if you can see the back, I think there's a picture, I don't know if we have a picture of the back of the building. There's a garage door in the back, and that's all going to be gone, that's not going to exist anymore, that's going to be changed. The view the neighbor's going to have on this, you know, beneath this street is going to be changed to, to a much more valuable view. The building, if you're stopped, there's going to be a little walkway through the doors. Right now, there are a couple of garages, because I think there's one garage door that's going to go away, because other things will be, so it's going to be a much more better view for the neighbors. And that's after discussion with the neighbors, and they're concerned what they have to look at every day. I travel by there every single day, so you see cars coming in and out of there, you said she's done now, but you've seen cars coming, there was no, no way the cars traveled, they just did whatever they wanted to do with the car. This is going to be a much more produced than neighbors. And I understand what you're talking politically, what the board ever means, you do want to see the impact. I will say, one of the concerns with the signs, we have MD, when people go there, they're not going there just because they're going to bring documents, in gentleman's speak and they're going there because there is a hot hand or something. The reason why the sign's so high up is, was people traveling down, they want to know where they're going to. It's, and I think they're here for convenient MD to discuss this, they're going to probably handle eighty percent of what, I think that's tied to, or eighty percent of what emergency room handles. And they don't want to be so low that people are around trying to find the building, so they want to be up high. And it is a concern, I will say, we went before the mayor, and the mayor, in the first ride, said, whoa, it's really bright, and it has been toned down. But there is a necessity, because when you're coming from another place and you're in an emergency, and there's an issue going on, that you need to see a doctor right away, and these are doctors that will be there, and then there are the actual physical emergency room doctors that will be there, they, you don't want to go searching for the building, which will dis... So the reason why it's so high up and so stand, and it stands out, is because that is a destination point, that people will generally go there, because they have to go there right away.
And that, that is of a very logical reason, you know, I, I completely understand quite clearly. If we could explore that a little bit more, could you help me understand where the point crossing sign of tenants would be as of right now on that plan?
Right now, that's very difficult.
And so people would be able to see that from two different directions, coming, coming south on Washington and...
Yes, it's going to be, so that it is somewhat readable to call.
So that would give some visibility into the site. I guess, I don't want to minimize my concern here, and again, the board members can tell me if they don't care, and then you can choose to ignore it if you want, is I don't know if I can get comfortable looking at that large of a convenient MD sign for the foreseeable future. And so I would just ask that you go back and you think about, are there variations of that sign that addresses your concern, which I think is very legitimate, making sure that people who are traveling to an emergency clinic are able to get the help that they need in a, as quick a way as possible, but also aesthetically not compromising this gateway intersection in a way that we're not all incredibly proud of. I know it's a balancing act, and I know that a company wants to promote their brand, and they, they're proud of this sign, and I'm not critiquing it, I just don't know if the long-visible intersection, one of them in Quincy, needs to have that exact prominent sign there.
So we've been working with convenient MD now for quite a while, and they've been very consistent in their, in being adamant that signage for them is the most important thing for getting people into the site, knowing where they are. You never notice a convenient MD or another urgent care facility, if you drive by it, you know, every day to and from work, you don't notice it until you need it. So having a sign there as prominent as it is when you need it, you need to know, you know, where it is and how to get into the site as efficiently as possible. The unfortunate thing about convenient MD, we've actually been told by the CEO that if he had the opportunity to go back in time, he would have possibly shortened the name, because it is such a long name, and there are so many letters, so when you actually look at the square footage for each letter, if you're going to have it be actually legible from any distance, it does take up, it does require taking up much more square footage than, say, a C, D, S, or something that has a much, you know, more condensed, you know, brand name. So what I would say is, they have made it clear to us that this is really the most important thing for them, is their size of their sign, unfortunately.
And that's very helpful, Mr. Jim. And does that include the giant check mark? Must be part of that sign. I know that's their brand, but I just want to push on this, does it have to look exactly like that? I know that I've gone to other communities where there are franchise locations or chains that their signs are slightly modified to fit into the surroundings, and they deviated from what may be their go-to signage everywhere else at the request of the community. Now, sometimes those may be historical, but, but here, I just want to make sure that I understand where our guardrails are, and whether, yes, we can get a big sign that gets people in, but if it has to look exactly like that?
So I don't, I'm speaking a little out of turn, speaking on behalf of the tenant, but my understanding, this has been a large part of our negotiations on lease and the design of the building, these exact issues. Because a convenient MD is trying to grow their brand in Massachusetts, they're very well-known in New Hampshire, they're starting to come down into Massachusetts, Quincy will actually be the first store that they open in Massachusetts, and they hope to use this as their kind of base and grow it from Quincy. That brand recognition and the, and the logo is very important for their, not only dislocation, but as they, as they grow, and I don't, I don't understand the, the marketing and the logo side of the business as well as they do, so I can't speak to, you know, maybe why it's so important, but it's been made very clear to us that this is, this is something that is vital for their success. Thank you.
One other, just a quick thing, just I wish to touch on your questions about the landscaping. Now, when you look at the rendering, it doesn't exactly represent the landscape plan that was done. The rendering was more done so you would have a look at what the building would look like, look like, but the actual landscape plan, which is more detailed here in color, you know, has much more, much better landscaping than what you're seeing in the rendering. So that may be a reason why we, excuse me, when we look at the rendering from that issue, but just wanted to make sure you...
That's helpful, no.
And then just also, just the red color that kind of goes in with the convenient MD logo, we did design the building, you know, based off of the convenient MD prototypes, you know, from that, that corner piece with the, with the red colors.
Okay, that's helpful, I agree. Just don't know if we want this site absolutely...
Just Paul, if you could divide us with maybe a picture of the existing building with the logo on it, next meeting? Also, is, okay, the, the picture of the site with that sign that Mr. Harnig pointed out, running, we have, that doesn't show the sign on the... , we have, that doesn't show the sign on the, on the lot. So, you know, we mentioned that we wanted to keep the building open so we can see it, but that sign seems pretty substantial to me.
This is small, that we will get a bigger one for you, but that is actually...
I'd like to see what the building is going to look like on Beacon Street, if you can get a view of that.
And just so, if that comes out as ready, uh, and unfortunately, that's the color, that is not the actual color itself, as you can see from us. But I agree, we're going to get a much bigger one for you, but the color is much darker. It's not bright red, and that's another thing we met with the mayor, uh, when it first started happening, it looked like a Howard Johnson's. And so we're trying to, we try to tone down the color. Unfortunately, that's not, it's not as bright as that.
Yeah, so that's why I asked for it to be the same.
One thing to comment as well, the check is going to be consistent across our branding in New Hampshire locations, so when we are advertising in, let's say, a sports facility or supporting community organization, that check, um, will be in that branding, so we want that to be synonymous when someone does drive by, so when they see Communiton, uh, they recognize it both. And then also, if we do, if someone's traveling down and they see a different location, the consistency of it is what's very important to us as well. So that's, that's kind of the, um, reason for keeping that check mark and that logo consistent across the board as well. As we said more, a lot, uh, a huge part of what we do is supporting community organizations. Um, it's our, it's our grassroots effort. We, we're not as much, uh, promoting on CBS and the radio, we're supporting local, um, but we're heavily focused on kids and elderly and, and, uh, supporting those youth organizations. Um, and that's our cause-related marketing, how we get the word out there, so we want, when they're walking down the street or when they're driving over, we want them to understand the brand, um, and, and the way we promote it as well.
Cool question, Mr. Jim. Just a comment really, I was just, I looked up some of the images of the other, um, Communiton M D, um, locations, and it does, I mean, the, the sign seems to be consistent, um, across the board, but I think, uh, there's several, um, buildings that don't have the, the red, um, cap or the red awnings, so I don't know if that's something that could maybe be discussed as toning it down, but...
That, that could change. I, I think that was, we're talking beyond, it was a strip on top, right? That's, that, that was just something we put in there. The sign itself is one thing, uh, and that's a trademark, but the, the red awnings, they just try to blend it in with the sign, uh, but again, that's something that, that's what's workable, looking down. As I believe it, if you see it in the one that, the smaller, though it's small, uh, that you have it there, it doesn't have the red awning, sort of red stripe above it.
Yeah, the other, the other ones have like, uh, uh, it all comes to a point on the top, and that was our original rendering, that we had sat down with the mayor and showed him. He had, uh, wasn't too fond of it, as Patrick said, it looked like the Howard Johnson's, so we went and improved it with this updated look, um, to, uh, a, a different prototype, but they do have in their locations, the, you know, the red, the roof is just a different structure, it's, it comes more to a point. There's one other location here, should I think, is it Portland, is this Portland?
Us, this one, um...
Is this Westbrook?
Yes, all of our new locations after our first couple were, um, did transition to this branding as well. So there's a few initial locations that before we started going up with the columns, but everything else has been consistent with, uh, the red. What we do, in Portland, we did a different color, we did an L frame, so...
I think the color would help tone it down a few.
I think you hear the board's reaction already, but I think the board, uh, is thinking along the same lines as Member Barry, um, so that, that you need to get some additional information to allay some of our fears.
We will progress forward, we'll progress forward to the council, and Mr. Fancy is in, will also advise that this, that we progress forward. We hope to be able to come back next month, uh, and show you, before between now and next month, be able to show you, uh, what direction we're going and how it's going to change.
It would be helpful if, if, we, we're meeting on November eighth, it would be helpful if, if that information could get to the department so that they could get it to us before the meeting, so we're not looking at something literally in the eleventh, twelfth hour, twenty-fourth hour. Okay, this is a public hearing, um, so I'm going to ask anybody that wishes to speak in favor to come forward. Anyone wishing to speak in favor to come forward. Third and last time, anybody wishing to speak in favor? Anybody wishing to speak in opposition? Second time?
I don't want to speak in opposition, but I just want to make a point. Member Callahan made a great point. I see no reason for this exit, I mean, people are going to take a left, they would just go down Beacon Street, they would get in there, so, I mean, for them to go in there, I don't see any reason, if it was a convenience store, if it was something, um, I think it would make sense, but that's a way you can kind of fix traffic in Quincy. We have a problem on Washington Street right now. So that's a place where, you know, I've gone through all different ways people would go there, and they would either go straight across, they would leave, people could go through this exit right here, say, cut through that light, and go through the parking lot, and then go down to the bridge. So, that would prevent that from having that exit there. And then on the sign thing, it looks to me that that's, they're going to need a zoning variance for that big of a sign, am I correct?
Not that, I don't know.
But I mean, it's like, that, that is a lot of signage there, I mean, because it's like two giant signs that are there of something that we don't know in the future. It could be any sort of medical business, you know, it might not be Continental M D, it could be Dr. Reefer, you know, so we don't know what that sign might be. But bottom line is that, um, I'm against giving anyone variances for signage. We have the giant sign on the, um, extra space storage that we approved, and we don't need a corridor going all the way to the bridge where places have, like, it's all billboards, so, um, you know, it's basically, it's going to be a good use of the property. I think it would be good to get some tax revenue there from that property, but, um, if it's not going to be a high-traffic use, getting rid of that curb cut, we have way too many curb cuts. Quincy's one of the few places where we allow people to have curb cuts wherever. The developers and the attorneys, they will ask you for curb cuts, that's smart for them to ask for those things, but you don't have to give them to them. So, give them everything else except that curb cut on Washington Street, and I'm for this project then.
Okay, third and last time, anybody wishing to speak in opposition? Council, you want to speak?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, I feel like I haven't been here, I feel like I've spent all my time with the zoning board, so it's, uh...
Well, come anytime you want.
Yeah, well, um, nice, nice, uh, nice to see everyone, and kudos to you, and I mean this absolute, with the utmost sincerity, like, your lines of questioning, spot on. So I'm one of these guys, I try not to recycle everything that I just heard. I think, um, I've had a great experience working with this board, uh, on various projects and, and opening the dialogue, which I believe we're doing here this evening. So again, thank you for your questions. I do want to point out, because, um, you know, I, I sort of live it on a, on a daily basis, just, uh, the transformative nature taking place as we speak along the Washington Street corridor, and, um, you know, from obviously the, uh, the opening of Four Lanes, which I know everyone's grateful for, on the former bridge, to, uh, you know, the, uh, Jumbo Storage Facility, which we worked together on, and, um, I just want to point out, because, uh, Member Barry, I, I agree with you, we worked on that project, and, you know, the, uh, the expectation they wanted is that we didn't want a, you know, a block-type building deliverable, right? So there were ways that we worked with the applicants to soften the tone, promote aesthetic, you know, while understanding that they're going to run a business. So we've, we've had successes along that, and I would say that based on that conversation with, uh, the applicant and team, uh, up till this point, we anticipate that we'll have similar success as this dialogue continues, so that's exciting. But, um, there, there really is a significant investment happen along Washington Street corridor, um, and I'm grateful to be a part of it, and I do believe that that, that sets the tone for anyone coming into the city of Quincy, you know, what we're all on, I truly, truly believe that. And, um, you know, by taking the sort of cautious approach and asking these questions, I think that we will end up with, uh, you know, the best deliverable for what I believe is a, is a marquee parcel in the city of Quincy, and should be, um, invested, you know, the time and thoughtfulness to get this right. I'm a firm believer is you get one bite at this apple, right? This is what you will see for a minimum of probably thirty or forty years, right? Um, so I agree to all that. We did host, I did host a neighborhood meeting, there was probably, I'd say, I don't know, twenty, twenty-five people that, uh, that did attend, shared sort of a whole host of, um, you know, concerns at the time, some of which had been addressed by the applicant, mainly those folks living on Beacon Street, and, uh, I completely can see where they're coming from, and it makes perfect sense that, uh, they wanted an investment in the aesthetic on the backside of the building, which obviously the applicant has shown, uh, a willingness to do that. I did receive an email today, I did not forward it, but I will, to, um, to Susan, because I, I actually had a pretty substantive conversation with the resident post email, but, uh, he had asked just to, you know, make sure that we're investing in the, um, uh, the landscape of the backside of, uh, of Beacon Street, which we covered, I do know that. And, um, you know, one of the issues that we've dealt with, uh, store in the close proximity, we have like a trash issue, right? So the trash from the convenience store blows into the neighborhood, and, uh, this gentleman doesn't want to see that happen in a similar fashion. Not saying that it would, but, you know, as maybe a precaution, we potentially look at some sort of screening or fencing to sort of act as a buffer for stuff blowing into the neighborhood. I'm not particularly sure what that would look like, but I am voicing some of the concerns coming out of the neighborhood. Um, you know, interestingly enough, and I've shared with this board, I, I do like the fact that we're keeping a commercial property paying commercial taxes, um, you know, I've been a proponent of that nature, uh, pretty much since I've been in office, so that to me is very appealing. The uses, in the applicant had covered it, but, you know, really, when you think about it, you know, D O T profiles, thirty thousand travel trips over the former bridge on a daily basis, rough, rough numbers. To have more of a high-volume, high-velocity type of use of that parcel would probably mean, you know, mass destruction, not only for the, uh, for the intersection, but also the neighborhood. So, um, the applicants, these folks have proposed, in my mind, it does a couple of things. It keeps a commercial property paying commercial taxes, allows them to essentially service the debt on their mortgage, and, uh, creates, you know, in theory, conceptually, a lower impact from a traffic standpoint to the neighborhood. Convenient M D, and I'm sure most folks are familiar, but I represent one of the maturest, you know, maturest populations in the city. I have a lot of senior citizens, I have a lot of senior citizens, not only in those high-rise residential buildings in close proximity to Convenient M D, but I have a lot of senior citizens in that area still living in their homes. So, for me, this particular use, arguably walking distance for these folks, I think will absolutely be an asset to the community. And I'm excited to see it be part of, or the premier tenant, um, for this parcel. You know, the traffic piece, obviously, it's something we're going to continue to probably peel back the onion. I heard the dialogue, you know, the entry, uh, excuse me, the exit onto, uh, onto, uh, the lottery, maybe something that, that you take into consideration. I know the signage, and, you know, we all know signs get folks in, in trouble at points. Um, I was just sort of thinking, because I've seen this happen recently, and you can too, uh, eighty Quincy Avenue. Eighty Quincy Avenue came and applied for, it's almost like a sign directory, it's pretty modern-looking, uh, from what I understand, the, the lighting is pretty low-key in the L E D fashion, and, uh, maybe that's an opportunity, you know, for the tenant to market their property, uh, but also to kind of, you know, not tone it down, kind of pull it in and maintain the integrity in terms of aesthetic for the property. I don't know, that's just a thought that came to me as I was listening to the discussion ensue out back. Uh, finally, I, I don't know if it was covered, please excuse me if I was, but I believe that the applicant is going to replace the sidewalks surrounding the, uh, that's a yes?
Portions of it, and adding sidewalk. And adding sidewalk, there's no sidewalk on Fessy, so we're adding sidewalk.
An actual firm sidewalk, not the soft shoulder, right? That's, that's, okay. So my apologies, and, um, obviously, you know, they, they come to us talking about what, you know, how they can stay active in, in the community, and, you know, they're so graciously inclined to, uh, make a contribution to the, to the community center, which I thought was a nice gesture, so. That's my comments, I know this is going to stay open, I'm assuming that there may be some more residents that want to participate, but this has been a very lengthy, and I anticipate will continue to be, conversation, so. Again, thank you for your due diligence and your questions, I, I really do, like, it was a, it was a good discussion, all right?
Thank you, Council. Okay, um...
Just one point, but I know I don't want to belabor it. I will tell you, the, the applicant also has a property, and I understand that Council calls, mentioned to me, the, the store behind it has caused a lot of trash in the area. Uh, this property is a conducive to trash, also, the upkeep that they have on their property night party, goodbye there, they maintain that property very well, and they'll still be managing this property too. Just so the board knows, the, remember the, uh, Communiton, you asked me if you could just give me a two-minute overview of what Communiton M D does, uh, just so you know exactly what they do, if that's possible.
So I did present a, uh, three-pack bit, uh, presentation, just in my talk, uh, we found community on principle creating access to high-quality medical care at the most affordable rates around. Uh, right now, when it comes out, uh, medical care, it can become a hot issue for everyone, access into primary care is lacking, access into, uh, E Rs is, is a, is a challenge, we really have a work crowd of E Rs, and primary care can't handle, uh, all the sick visits and the illness and injuries that they're, uh, they like to see in a timely manner. Focusing on, uh, bringing community into town is, uh, into the communities that we have served, has really helped alleviate the, uh, the local E Rs and support the primary care, um, and, but also, it impacts the employers, it impacts the residents. So when we talk about the, the seniors and the, and the kids and, and schools and families, that's our target market, that's what we're focused on. Um, and when you ask someone in, in, uh, in some of our existing locations, what does community mean to you, um, that really has become their home for when they get sick or injured. Uh, we provide a very broad scope of care, we'll treat about eighty percent of the walks into the E R, but add a fraction of the cost, we're, we're adding a very, um, uh, very price-sensitive, uh, very affordable option to town for people as well. Um, in terms of, um, the quality of care, it's something that we take a lot of pride in. We hire some of the best physicians, nurses and X-ray techs, uh, from the, from the local community, and transplant them into one of our facilities, which would enter into, um, right, right there, uh, as you, you drive in, uh, it's very, it's very convenient access to walk in, eight days, seven days a week. And then again, um, when you, when you do receive your bill, it's going to be, instead of a, an E R visit of fifteen hundred dollars for, you know, kind, everyone has this anecdote of kinderhand, or, uh, get, having a strep throat and walking to the E R, um, we're going to be, uh, less than two hundred and fifty dollars on that same equivalent visit. So, we're, we're talking about seventy-five to ninety-five percent less than the equivalent of what, uh, the community is seeking care, uh, right now. So we're really going to, uh, establish a, a high, high-quality, very convenient and affordable option. Um, when I talk about, um, I, I mentioned briefly before a little bit about some civic actions that we, uh, community involvement, that we get involved in, and if you do jump to, to slide three, um, this is something that we, has been a cornerstone of, uh, when we developed, um, uh, Communiton D, we really made it an effort, growing up in the, in New England, um, headquartered out of Portsmouth, New Hampshire, we wanted to give back to the community, and we also wanted to get our word out through the community as well. So we take a very different approach. Um, a, a big part of what we do in our mission is really supporting, uh, against kids and seniors and, and families alike as well. Um, we've developed a school nurse partnership program in every community that we serve. Uh, throughout New Hampshire, we've, we've nine, uh, locations, we serve approximately eighty-five percent of, of the population of New Hampshire, and we are the leader in urgent care in New Hampshire, we're entering Maine, this will be again, our first entrance to mass. Um, but when you talk to, again, a school nurse in New Hampshire, we've, we've provided free care for kids in need, uh, never, we never present a bill to them, so they'll walk, actually, uh, call over, say, I'm sending over so-and-so, we won't even ask them for payment, we'll take care of those kids at no charge. Uh, so we're providing hundreds of thousands of dollars of free care for kids in need. Uh, we're going to do their, uh, free sports, physicals, vaccinations, injections, um, things that your traditional medical options will not be covering, is something that we have established as an opportunity to really help integrate into the community and serve it, uh, the best we can. So that's a, um, and then also from a, uh, community organization standpoint, um, we always take a lot of pride, and when we go into a town, you'll, you'll, um, we try to be the largest sponsor, uh, make the biggest impact, uh, from, so we're going to, in terms of all your community organizations, your youth organizations, and your senior organizations, uh, we're going to be sponsoring, uh, road races and community events, and you'll see the big community tent there with the same logo, uh, we'll be frank, handing out free giveaways and, and, uh, and really trying to interact and again, be a great community member. So, between, we'll, we'll do hundreds of thousands of dollars' worth of free care for, again, for, uh, our, our community as well, um, but then also really help support those organizations that we all know drive, um, drive our community, are really the cornerstone of, of, uh, our, in community, community engagement. So, we do consider our, our, um, our brands, um, even though it's, it's not established in, in Massachusetts, we... we, we're hoping to establish it here right in this location. We consider our brand to be the best of the best in terms of urgent care. And then also, from a community standpoint, we do focus in on being the best community partner that we possibly can when we do enter into a town. And we'll, you can hold, hold me to that when you see us six months after, after our opening. The, our goal is that you'll come back and say, everything you said is exactly true. And we prove that time and time again, in terms of getting involved with the community, making a positive impact. I'd be happy to answer any other questions you may have around the services, how we get involved.
Could I just have your name, please?
Uh, sorry, it's Ben Pongs.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you.
I just have one additional request and that ties in with the traffic. You alluded to the mitigation package.
Yes.
Can I see what that mitigation package is gonna do to the level of service?
Absolutely.
But my concern is, that person who needs medical attention, I don't want them to have a major medical problem trying to get to your location.
Right. So, I, we can certainly do that. It's, I'll extract it from the traffic study so you don't have to go through that big thing, put it in the simple couple pages.
Yes. Great, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Fancies. So, I have to motion to continue this to our November, I'm sorry.
Just a couple more questions, just to get out of the front of the next meeting. We could, we talked about, and thank you very much, Ben, for, for that overview. Think that having this sort of facility in that neighborhood is gonna be a substantial benefit to the community. One thing that we haven't talked about though is, we've talked about the bank, we've talked about the urgent care facility, we've talked about Horizon. There's two other potential businesses that could be there. Could you help me understand the square footage and what sort of businesses will be targeted, understanding you don't have tenants yet?
Okay. So, there's, yes, there's two spaces. One is thirty-five hundred square feet and the other is sixteen hundred seventy square feet. We haven't specifically targeted any specific tenants yet. We've been trying to, you know, get our core tenants stabilized and get the product underway. But what we expect here, similar projects that mesh, similar, excuse me, similar tenants that mesh well with convenient MD and Verizon. I think it's gonna be a lot of soft type, soft type of retail, not a lot of high-traffic. You know, we could see a dentist here, you know, a physical therapist. Those types of uses that would mesh well with a, a convenient MD.
Okay. I have one more question.
Go ahead.
I would just challenge the applicant on that rendering right there, when you're coming north on, on Washington. It's a little bit drought, it's a little bit plain, it's a little bit, I know there's not a lot that you can do with, with that sort of facade, but, but I'd be interested to see what you can come up with. That's a lot of blank wall with no windows. And I know that that's what it is now, but-
Are you speaking?
I'm, I'm, even ignoring the sign, that's still a lot of wall. And I, I'd love for you guys to come back to us with some way to spruce that up.
Do you want, do you wanna go to the December meeting?
We'll get right on it.
I will tell you that one of the tenants, Horizon, is very adamant about how they want that log kept. So, the applicant is fully aware that both convenient MD and Horizon are pretty strict as to how they want that log kept as far as being clean and stuff. So, they're, they're gonna be very diligent on that.
Any other questions in the board? See you on the eighth.
See you at the eighth. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Nice job, Tim. Thanks for the help.
Thanks, Paul.
Yeah, I have a motion to continue the public hearing to, to November eighth.
Okay.
Hold on a second, favor.
Aye.
Okay, the only other item that we have that's still in the business and that is the review and determination to approve the mess, the attorney general's revision to the open meeting law regulation. You all should have a copy of them in your package. I'm just asking you to be, that you review them, be aware of them. I don't think we need to adopt, we're obviously gonna adhere to them, but just so everybody's aware of it. Any other business? Have a motion to adjourn?
So, hold.
Thank you. See you on the eighth.